Yo, are you one of those people who like scrolling through real estate listings? Maybe watching shows where people find their dream homes? Have you ever thought about turning that into a job? Nah, for real, like seriously getting paid for your passion. Well, as a real estate broker, you can have a flexible work schedule. That means you can make money on the real estate stuff, but then use your scrolling time for other things you love. And if you're like Jacoby, that sounds cool and all, but where do I even start? I got you. Learn how you can get started this summer by visiting RealtorsRealestateSchool.com/begin. Today on CityCast Chicago, how many candidates are there running for Chicago's first ever school board election? What does Ed Burke sentencing mean for future corruption trials? And does the bear season three live up to the Emmy hype? I watched the first three episodes, y'all, and I got thoughts. All of those answers and more with WTTW politics reporter Heather Sharon and Chalk Beat Chicago Bureau Chief Becky VV. It's Friday, June 28th. I'm Jacoby Cochran and this is what Chicago is talking about. Morning Heather, how you feeling today?
I'm good, how are you?
I am doing well. I am excited to have you here and Becky joining us live from the parking garage. How you feeling this morning, my friend?
Oh, you know, I'm feeling it.
We appreciate both of y'all being here and we appreciate everybody listening to this episode. If you are new here, every Friday, we like to bring in our friends from wherever they can join us to talk about some of the biggest stories from the week. And this is our last Friday of June. So before we get into the stories, I want to know, what was y'all's favorite thing you did in June? Becky, I'm gonna start with you. What was the best thing you did in June?
The best thing I did in June, which I'm very proud of, is I ran the Chicago half marathon on the great west side. It was an incredible course, an incredible day.
Oh my God, come on.
The course runs through Douglas Park, Garfield Park and Humboldt Park. And it was just a great day and it's been so long since I've done a race of that length.
That's exciting. Are you a full marathon person or is this like a starting point?
I ran the full marathon once when I was 26 and I am now 36 and I haven't really run a half or a full since the, the full I did. So it's been about a decade that I'm, I'm, my, my limit is the half length. I'm gonna leave it at that.
Okay, well, congratulations. Glad you got to do that in June. Shout out to you and all the other runners who completed. Heather, over to you. What was one of your best memories this past June?
Well, June for a lot of working parents can be tough, right? Because you've got to sort of traverse that sort of, you know, change from the school year to summer. And you've got to find summer camps and childcare and all of that sort of thing. And my, my kids are now tweens and teens. So it's a little bit different than dealing with the littles and it's just a different challenge. So every June, I just try to make it to the fourth of July without anybody sort of like getting left, getting dropped, not getting dropped off. And everybody getting where they're supposed to be. But really, um, you know, I gotta give a shout out to my friends over to Block Club Chicago. They celebrated their sixth birthday in June and you know, my kids are alive and thriving. And you know, we've got sort of, you know, really sort of, you know, good things going on here in, in the Chicago journalism world.
For me throughout June, I got to see some really cool music performances. I got to see Chief Keef's return to the Chicagoland area. I got to see John Doe, local Chicago musicians tour hit Chicago this month. But one of my favorite things in June was hosting karaoke storytellers at Brando's Speakeasy. We have hosted this show across a few different venues in Chicago, some that are home to live music like Lincoln Hall, like a Shubas. But hosting it at Brando's, a karaoke lounge and all of the people who performed in the show are people who regularly attend Brando's. And so hearing their story of finding this, this speakeasy, uh, people not familiar is in the loop. But listening to them tell their story of finding this karaoke bar, finding their community here, and then listening to them sing these songs was absolutely good. It was the 49th edition of karaoke storytellers and we're hosting our 50th in July, July 18th, on a shoreline sightseeing tour boat. So we're going to pack 150 people on a boat out on the lake and we're going to listen to people like Sam Thousand, Bianca Shaw, Leila Hall tell stories and sing karaoke on a boat. And so I'm so excited. As we said at the beginning of the episode, we love to bring in people to talk about big stories. And I mean, one huge story is obviously Chicago's forthcoming elected school board. It's going to be the first ever. Becky, I have been going to you time and time again to explain this. And so help me out to make sure I got my information correctly because there's a lot here. So make sure I'm doing well, right? Monday was the deadline for the Chicago school board candidates to submit their petitions for the city's first school board elections on November 5th. And if people don't remember, since 1995, school board has largely been under the control of the mayor. The current seven person board is appointed by the mayor. Brandon Johnson pretty much scrapped the entire board when he took office. And back in 2021, legislation was passed to transition Chicago to an all elected school board. The key word here is transition. That means this year we will have 10 districts. We will elect 10 members to a four year term and the mayor will appoint 10 members to two year terms. Am I correct so far?
Kind of, except the first, the 10 members get a two year, the elected members get two year terms as well. Everyone's up for election in 2026 and that's when some will get four and some will get two. But for the purposes of November, we've got 10 districts and 10 races.
Okay, so people submitted their petitions. How many folks will, as of right now, are looking like they're going to be on the ballot?
Well, that is a money question, but we have 47 who filed petitions to get on the ballot. Some races have as many as seven or eight candidates. Others have as few as three. I don't think there are any races with just two at this point. But as we know, um, Chicago politics is a sport and many say it's the best game in town. And we will on Monday see who of all of those 47 candidates get challenged, meaning they may not make it on the ballot. They're maybe taken off if their signatures aren't good enough or if they're not valid or somebody challenges their residency. So 47 candidates filed, 47 people want to serve on the school board in Chicago, the first ever partially elected school board. And I think that's a really amazing and kind of big deal.
Since the legislation was passed, we've had questions like, okay, how many people will get elected? And what will the maps look like? And, and, and how will we move forward as, as we're transitioning? And we've started to get a lot of those things. We have a map. Like you said, we know how many people were electing in November, how many people will be elected in 2026? What are the big questions now? Cause last time we checked, we were still saying, well, was this process accessible to a lot of people?
And I think that is a big question still because again, that idea of challenging people's petitions, that's going to play out in the month of July and some of August. So the ballot should be set sometime before school starts. We should have a much better sense of, of who is gonna, of those 47 still be on the ballot. And we soon, you know, right now we're moving into a phase where it's time to get to know these people. Who are they? What experience do they have in schools? Did they go to CPS? Do they have children in CPS? Did they work in CPS? And I think that is the phase we're heading into as a city and you know, Chalk Beat is.
I look at one like district 10 where there's names like Che Rime Fest Smith, Grammy award winning songwriter, community activist Karen Norrington Reeves, who was a former candidate in the Illinois first congressional district. Are there any names on here that stand out to you?
Yeah, so there's a couple, there's another person in district 10 Reverend Robert Jones, who was a hunger striker at Diet High School when they were trying to save that school from being closed. Another hunger striker in district five, G2 Brown is a name that many may recognize. There's also folks, you know, a former principal who was a source of mine is running in district 10. Yesenia Lopez in district seven, she was already endorsed by Congressman Jesus Juig Garcia. So you know, we've got some folks who have worked in charter schools, who are advocates of school choice. There are a couple of people who, um, you know, appear maybe more connected in the private school world. As we talk to these people and interview them, sort of figuring out what is animating and motivating their runs for school board. You know, there was some, and is still probably a lot of concern in the education world that some people will just see this as a political stepping stone. Is this just a seat that they will hold for a couple of years and then they'll go on to a bigger and better seat? I argue it is a great seat, you know, school board's super important, but I do think, you know, in many other municipalities across the nation, school board is a very small seat. It's also a volunteer position, Jacoby, we've talked about this. They're not paid members like city council members are. So that is also going to limit, I think, you know, who runs, who gets these seats and who, you know, decides to serve in sort of a more long-term capacity. You also may see again, more special interests kind of backing folks. Of course, we'll get endorsements from the CTU, from the charter school, Illinois Network of Charter Schools. These are groups that endorse in alder manic campaigns also. We will see a lot of that, I think, come out in the next, you know, again, month or two, as we head into back to school time.
Again, all Chicagoans will be electing members of the school board in November. So stay tapped in to Chalk Beat Chicago, chicago.citycast.fm for the latest. Y'all, I'm still trying to decide who I'm gonna see at Ravinia this summer. In case y'all don't know, let me put you on. Ravinia is North America's longest running outdoor music festival and they offer over a hundred concerts from June to September. And seriously, there is something for everybody. What you like, what you like? Classical music, they got you. Musical theater, got you. Pop, folk, hip hop, R and B, oldies, contemporary, dance, even movies, you will find a concert for you. Me personally, I'm down to two choices and I need y'all help. It's either gonna be the Roots on Saturday, August 24th, or TLC and Shaggy on Saturday, August 31st. You know what, I probably gonna see both. Any excuse to pack myself a little picnic and enjoy Ravinia's lawn. I could even ride the metro up there for free with my ticket. So pick your show and buy your tickets now only at ravinia.org.
Hi, I'm David Plotz, CEO of CityCast, or as I can say now, thanks to a few weeks with Babbel. Voilà, soy David Plotz, el jefe de CityCast. What if in 2024, you've got a little bit better every day? When you're learning a new language with Babbel, that's exactly what you're doing. And if Babbel can help me start speaking a new language in just three weeks, imagine what you could do in a full year. I got started with Babbel because I realized that my girlfriend, who's a native Spanish speaker, and my son, who's in AP Spanish, were conspiring against me. Or I thought they were conspiring against me in Spanish. I wanted to know what they were talking about. And now, thanks to literally just a few weeks of Babbel, I'm starting to be able to eavesdrop. It is rare that something so fun and simple, and Babbel is super fun and very simple, is also so useful. So here's a special limited time deal for CityCast listeners. Right now, get up to 60% off your Babbel subscription, but only for CityCast listeners at babbel.com/citycast. Get up to 60% off at babbel.com/citycast. Spelled B A B B E L dot com slash citycast. Rules and restrictions may apply.
Heather, over the last three years, you have been the person that we have turned to as we have broken down the corruption trial, the ultimate conviction of Ed Burke, former alder, the longest serving alder person in Chicago's history. And now this week, we had a sentencing. Ed Burke was sentenced to two years, $2 million fine, and I believe one year of supervised release. What does this sentencing mean not only for Ed Burke's legacy, but the, the future of corruption trials, the, the way city council works moving forward? What have you gathered? You were in court this week.
Yeah, it was really a dramatic moment. And so to, to backtrack a little bit, the federal prosecutors had asked the judge in the case, US District Court Judge Virginia Kendall, to send Ed Burke to prison for 10 years. Now, Ed Burke is 80. So, um, his family in really emotional sort of heartrending terms told the judge in letters that if she, she agreed with that, sent that recommendation, they would be sentencing Ed Burke to die in jail. And I think that I, it really shows just what serious crimes he was actually convicted of. We're talking racketeering, we're talking attempted extortion, we're talking attempted bribery. And Ed Burke, while his legacy as somebody who sort of, the, the council wars to sort of prevent Chicago's first black mayor from exercising his elected power is 100% of his legacy, it's also a little bit more complicated. And what Ed Burke's defense lawyers did was to flood the judge with more than 200 letters attesting to what a great guy Ed Burke is. And I think that these letters were really interesting because some of them were from really high profile people, like former police superintendents and former federal prosecutors and alder people. But others were from just regular people who lived in his 14th ward, which was, which is on the southwest side of Chicago. So we're talking like Archer Heights and Gage Park. And they told story after story of how Ed Burke, you know, helped somebody with some money to pay their mortgage after a job was lost. Or how he sat with the family after somebody had died. Or how he mobilized efforts to make sure that people's kids, Scott, you know, tuition payments were paid for. And that he did so, these letters said, in return, they said for nothing. And it was really, I think, those letters that, that prompted the judge in this case to, to send Ed Burke to prison for two years and to fine him $2 million. Because you know, her job as a judge is to not just sort of take into account sort of what he was convicted of. She had to take into account whether he was likely to commit other crimes. She found that he wasn't since he no longer holds power and is of course 80. And then she said she also felt the need to try to send a message to other elected officials that corruption is not acceptable. And here, it was really fascinating to me that Ed Burke really benefited from basically her decision to throw up her hands and say, I don't know, we've tried. We've sent two governors in the last, you know, 20 years to prison. It hasn't really changed anything. We've sent dozens of representatives. We have sent, I kid you not, 38 alder people to prison since 1969. It hasn't really changed. So it doesn't make any sense to me to sort of feel like I have to sort of hit Burke with a heavier sentence to sort of make that point. So she didn't. And I, I think that, you know, I saw a lot of chatter online about sort of that $2 million fine being just a massive fine. And it is, it's very unusual. It's not something that typically happens in these sort of cases. But let's be clear, if Ed Burke wanted to, he could write a check for that $2 million tomorrow and be done with it. Because not only did he tell federal officials as part of the pre-sentencing process that he has a network of $30 million. He has, um, he has $8 million in his campaign accounts that he is legally allowed to use to pay these fines. So I think, uh, I think I have some real questions about the, the sort of the painfulness of that fine. Because I think it raises real questions about sort of our tolerance as like a city and as sort of like a county for the whole, I know a guy sort of notion of things. Because there's this sense that for, for decades, Ed Burke was the guy who helped people, powerful, not powerful, in between, to get whatever they needed from the system. In Chicago, we sort of accept that the system works best if you can get in to see a powerful person and they can pull the levers on your behalf. And I think we as Chicagoans, I've said this before, I am, you know, a broken record on this. We have to decide if that's how our system, a democracy should work. Should it work for the people who can get that meeting with Ed Burke and let him demonstrate his generosity and charity and larger? Or should it work for everybody so that you don't have to go hat in hand to an elected official? Who we now know was brazenly and repeatedly using his office to amass just a massive amount of wealth.
Is our current system of accountability, particularly around city council, set up to prevent the next Ed Burke?
So I think it's a difficult question because there's no doubt that Ed Burke is the last of his kind. There will never be another alder person who serves 54 years. It just, it, it just won't happen. Like the, the, the way the system is set up is that it just, it doesn't work that way anymore. And it's not set up that way because the courts ruled that basically you can't trade municipal jobs for votes. And that was really the, the underlying structure that created the machine that Ed Burke exploited. And you know, in a criminal way, we can now say. Now you can't be a property tax attorney and represent people who have business before the city council. So that has changed. But do we still sort of have a relatively high tolerance in Chicago for graft? We absolutely do. Does that sort of perniciously sort of expand the inequities of our city? And does nothing to sort of make Chicago a better place to live? I think that's the fundamental question we have to ask.
Last year, city council created a subcommittee on revenue to come up with ideas to raise revenue to fund city programs. Its first meeting happened this week. Now, this is crucially important when you consider the Johnson administration hoped to raise $800 million in new revenue for the city when they took office. He wanted to achieve this without directly raising property taxes. He has floated ideas to increase taxes on other things which have yet to be passed. The big revenue generator that was Bring Chicago Home failed to pass. And you know, we can't forget that the American Rescue Act money, AKA that COVID relief money is drying up and drying up fast. Becky, in your understanding, how did this meeting go?
Well, it sounds like this, uh, meeting was not high on specifics. It was sort of the beginnings of what Heather and I would really remember often during budget season, which is this moment where it feels like we're looking for the proverbial change in the couch cushions. Um, and we're, I guess, operationalizing that into a committee who will be exploring revenue ideas throughout the year, perhaps, um, through multiple meetings. And so as this, uh, committee met for the first time on Wednesday, they kind of, I guess, you know, talk about possible ideas, many of which I think have been floated in the past. Things like there's congestion pricing for downtown, um, increasing the price of a city sticker ticket. I think the thing that will be interesting to me is if this committee, um, can, you know, break out of frankly, some of these little ticky tacky tiny incremental.
Sort of fines and fees.
Fines and fees, yeah. Um, and actually maybe think more creatively about the kind of whole revenue structure for the city. And, um, and I, I think it, it will just be kind of fascinating to watch. And frankly, something that I think is worth taxpayers paying a little more attention to. And maybe finding out when they meet next and, and perhaps bringing in the public's voice on, on what would be creative revenue source. Because as you mentioned, the big, uh, you know, tax that Johnson was banking on, Bring Chicago Home, went down in a referendum.
Yeah.
I don't think voters had the appetite for that. And I guess I, I think the question will really be, what can this revenue committee come up with? And, and can they get the public on board? Can it be something that is supported by, by others, uh, by the voters?
The city basically can't borrow any more money. Like it has a massive amount of debt. And you know, if the city were to borrow to cover sort of operating expenses, you know, if you're covering to you, if you're borrow, if you're putting groceries on credit cards, that's going to have sort of a big sort of domino effect. So this is Johnson's, now what I call it, a dog and pony show, not in polite company, but it's just us. So I'll just say it because this is him saying, look, I'm really, I'm, I'm working on this. Because the central sort of promise he made to Chicagoans when he ran for, for mayor was, I'm going to start investing in people. Well, what do you need to invest? You need money. And this is him saying, I'm trying to get it. Now, if his argument is, is yeah, the finances of the city are out of whack because our priorities have been out of whack. We've been sort of helping the wealthy and we've been helping people who have a lot. We have not been helping people who actually need that help. So this is a signal that he is going to sort of try to sort of make significant changes in this upcoming budget. There's a reason why it's starting now. Budget season usually kicks off at the end of July. So this is sort of the start of sort of, you know, that effort. And we will know more at the end of July when we see the budget forecast and we know what the budget gap for 2025 is going to be. And that will really dictate sort of the, the parameters of what Johnson and his, his, his administration have to work with.
One more story before we get to the good news. Over the last few weeks, we have covered Governor Pritzker's plan to tear down and rebuild, uh, two prisons in Illinois, including the nearly century old Statesville Correctional Center just southwest of Chicago. It's had a lot of folks, including myself, asking like, what does it mean to be rebuilding, sort of reinvesting in prisons? Sort of keeping towns reliant on prisons as their driving economic source. But at the heart of this is also about particularly with Statesville, it being an inhumane place to be. And that what folks are exposed to as they stay there are violent conditions that, uh, reared their hand once again, uh, this June with 51 year old Michael Broadway died. Can you tell us a little bit Heather, about who was Michael Broadway and how his death ultimately reflects back on this larger plan to tear the prison down?
Yeah, so my colleague, Brandis Friedman, has done a lot of reporting about the conditions inside Statesville. And she got to know Michael Broadway a little bit. You know, he's a 51 year old man. He was an author and he was one of the first people at Statesville to get a Northwestern university degree through a program that the university ran in there. And you know, he was somebody I think that the program really saw as a success story. He also was a stage four prostate cancer survivor, which meant that when it got really hot, he was at greatest risk at Statesville. And, and he died and during that, that heat wave. And it's raising, I think, significant questions about sort of whether those facilities meet literally just the bare minimum of keeping people safe and protected from the elements, which you know, is, is really, I think, incumbent upon sort of the state. Like if we're going to take as a state, we're going to take custody of somebody's freedom, we have to provide for them. And, and it's clear that, that, that that is not the case at, at Statesville and, and that Michael Broadway, somebody who, you know, had no doubt struggled and had no about, no doubt, sort of, you know, committed serious crimes, had really sort of started a new era just recently. And I think it's really devastating, um, to see that cut short because of these problems, which are so well documented and so well known. And that institutionally, you know, state officials hadn't been able to do enough about it to prevent this from happening.
Have there been any responses on, um, you know, from the, the Illinois Department of Corrections or the governor's office?
So they say there's an investigation going ongoing now into his death and they can't, they have said they can't really comment on that because it's ongoing and they can't comment on his death in specific because of privacy concerns. But you know, I think that this is, it might seem like kind of a, a not crucial dispute. Like what should we do as a state here? But I think it's a good reminder that these are actual people who have, you know, dreams and goals and, and, you know, make accomplishments, who, you know, are, are paying the price for sort of these dilapidated structures. You know, are we collectively as a state going to be able to get our stuff together to do something about it and prevent something like this from happening again? And what do we owe to the people who, who have suffered so seriously?
Again, we have been joined by Heather Sharon from WTTW and Becky VV from Chalk Beat Chicago. All of the stories we discussed today, you can find links in our show notes. Every single episode of CityCast Chicago ends the same way. Me begging you to bring your ass back here for the next episode, because that's the only way I stay employed. But right before I do a little bit of that begging, uh, you know, we hit you with some good news. Becky, I love celebrating Chicago's newest restaurants. And you sent me a story this week from my friend Ashok over at Eater Chicago about a restaurant coming to West Town that's got a lot of people excited. Tell me a little bit about Failed.
So Failed is a 30 course tasting menu experience and, um, is being opened after a couple of years of concepting. The, the main chef kind of rose to TikTok fame and, um, has traveled the world, working in different restaurants. Graduate of CPS, as far as I know.
He was in, in Germany, in Japan.
Yep. Um, and you know, I, this is on my radar because I have a little bit of a personal connection. My sister, who owns her own interior design firm, helped design the inside of Failed Restaurant. Her firm, um, did a lot of work on it.
Shout out Variant Collaborative.
They've been working hard all week to get it ready for its opening and it's hap- They've been working hard all week to get it ready for its opening. And it's happening this weekend. It's 30-course tasting menu.
Soon as you sent me this, I went on Talk, the service they use for reservations. They had one more Friday appointment. You can get on the 5:45 waitlist or you can get the 9:15. And then I saw the $95 deposit, $195 per person. And I was like, well, it ain't my birthday. It ain't, you know, let me find me 4th of July. I don't know if that's a holiday I'm doing for that. But, but I'm a sucker for these. People can hear it in multiple episodes. So, you know, I still have not completely ruled it out, to be, to be clear. But shout out to Feld, shout out to Chef Jake over in West Town. One of the reasons we are so excited for Chicago restaurants, not only because we like going to them, but we like when they make TV shows about them too. And the city's favorite Emmy Award-winning TV show, The Bear, dropped season three earlier this week. We had an episode yesterday with Greta Johnson and we talked about our anticipation, storylines we were looking forward to. Heather, this is your good news today. How excited are you for season three?
So I am pretty excited. And look, I love Chicago. Like, I, I am in, I strive to be an objective journalist, but like, when it comes to Chicago, like, I am an unabashed stand. And I have, I had mixed feelings when it dropped in the first season because it seemed like maybe it was made by people who actually grew up in Naperville, but tell people that they live in, they grew up in Chicago or that they're from Chicago. But by the end of the first season, and certainly through the second season, I, there was something that it like captured about Chicago that, that won my heart. And I'm always excited to see Chicago in the national spotlight for something creative and something that does not involve Al Capone or, you know, Michael Jordan or, you know, crime. And I just, I think that like somehow it has captured something about the striving nature of Chicago that, that I really respond to. Even though I still have, you know, some of my, I do have some beef with it. Like, we need to talk about the fact that Karmi would not have a 773 tattoo. He would have a 312 tattoo. I will go to my grave yelling at people about this. And let's say, somebody wants to like go in and digitally like change that tattoo, that would be very helpful for me personally, as I, as I ogle Jeremy Allen White. So please look, please look into that. But, you know, any show that makes a major plot point about Ceres, the famed bar in the Board for Trade Building, and tells the story of the faceless statue up on the top of the Board of Trade Building, I'm here for it.
Hey, you know, 773 was added into me in 90s. He a 90s baby. For him, it might be the, might be the area.
Because I'll fight you over this because like, that is just not how anything works.
So I watched the first three episodes and my fandom is reinforced. Greta said something in yesterday's episode, similar to what you just said. I liked season one. I loved it by the end, but I liked season one. I loved season two. And neat, what these first three episodes have accomplished from a tonal standpoint, from a storytelling standpoint, I thought was absolutely beautiful television. See, episode one is all Karmi and it's very little dialogue. It's very little linear storytelling. It's a lot of scenes. You feel like you're in his brain throughout the episode, seeing some of the places he had been in his career, leading up to his return. And it informs part of the story that you've been wondering. Episode two has one of my favorite Chicago restaurant montages that I've seen open the episode. It is, it is so Chicago, the different places it takes you to, the different faces. It's almost like you can smell the montage, for better and worse, at different points. No, that's a direct shot at Streets of Sands, which I think gets a quick cameo in the montage. But it quickly reestablishes what people love and hate about this show, which is the stress, how stressful it is. It's back to stress at all times. And so that's why I leave it. I love the first three episodes. I hope people enjoy it. I want to hear your thoughts. Let us know by calling us at 773-780-0246. Let us know your thoughts. Before we get out of here, my some good news. Chicago's annual Stop the Violence Celebrity Basketball Game featuring hip-hop legend Twista is back this Saturday at 2 PM at Chicago Hope Academy Fieldhouse off of Harrison in California. I will drop a link in the show notes for you. I gotta give a huge thank you to our guest from Chalkbeat Chicago, Becky VV. Becky, thank you so much for joining us today.
Thanks. Thanks so much for having me.
Thank you. And from WTTW, Heather Sharone, we appreciate you being back, my friend.
I'm here anytime you need me.
Before we get out of here, I want to give a huge thank you to all of the people who help us make CityCast Chicago every day. Our executive producer is Simone Ali Saya. Our producer is Michelle Navarro. Our Hey Chicago newsletter editor is Sidney Madden. The music we all love is from Sam Thousand, All the Kimonos, and Mark Greenberg from the Mayfair Workshop. Huge love to all of the people back at headquarters. And my last thank you, as it is every single week, is for you. Yes, you. I'm gonna be back bright and early on Monday. Hopefully you'll join us. Peace.